Again, too friendly in this group. I have called a meeting back to order. We've been in executive session. We are returning now. And on roll call, I'll just say this for the public to know that Mrs. Burns and Mr. Mullis are unable to be here this evening, and we'd like you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Our first item of business will be items of consensus. My thing is right here. I feel like I'm being attacked by a... What is that? Goodbye. All right, thank you. Okay, let me see. First of all, we have a donation which I'll have Superintendent Delai read to us about this donation. Very generous people here.
Yes, we have a donation of seventeen hundred and sixty dollars that was made and will be used to send twenty-two of our staff members here in Wilmington to the annual Visions of Community Conference that's hosted by the Federation for Children with Special Needs. So we will be sending twenty-two staff members, and I'm planning to attend myself, and that's on Saturday, March 5th. The donor of these funds asked to remain anonymous.
So I would have a motion to accept the family donation in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Mrs. Carroll?
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you very much. Then we will have the approval of the minutes of January twentieth, twenty sixteen, regular session. Warrants G four-one-three, G four-one-four, R two-one-three, R two-one-four, L twenty-nine, and L thirty. Warrants C B oh-eight, C B oh-nine, and warrants sped twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Bonish?
So moved.
Mrs. Brusad?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Payroll warrants of one-twentieth, twenty sixteen, and two-three, twenty sixteen.
I'll make a motion to accept warrants payroll for Weekend one-twenty and two-three, twenty sixteen.
And we have a second. Oh, Mr. Bjork, sorry. I have to move my head. Sorry. All those in favor? That would be three in favor, Kim, and two abstain. And the two abstained payroll would be Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Okay, and our last, I think our last one, yep, warrants FS seventeen, FS eighteen, FS nineteen. Mrs. Bonish?
So moved.
Mr. Bjork?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? One, two, three, four in favor, and one abstained. Mrs. Carroll? Okay, we did it. Thank you very much. All right. Oh. Very nice to see you again. We're Student School Committee. You had time to do some homework while you were waiting, huh?
Yeah, I actually did. I used my time wisely.
You're so good.
Well, hi, everyone. Coming back from our four-day weekend involving two snow days. That was fun, huh? I would like to regroup.
Enter your perspective.
Well, I'd like to regroup and update everyone on the happenings at W H S. First off, there's been an amazing abundance of fundraisers that I've seen to benefit the school and the people in it as well. The class of two thousand nineteen recently just had a fundraiser at the ninety-nines. The class of two thousand eighteen just had a fundraiser at ninety-nines as well during midterm week. The class of two thousand seventeen had a fundraiser at Bud Ruckers. And they also served hot chocolate and freshly baked granola bars every Friday, and that benefits their class as well. The Local Heroes Club sold Teddy grams for Valentine's Day. And the good thing about Teddy grams is that for every teddy bear that they sell, one teddy bear is donated to a soldier overseas or a wounded soldier. And I love the mission statement of the Local Heroes Club in helping out every veteran soldier overseas and just helping them in any way possible. Also, the W H S Deca Club, which is a business club that lets you experience the real world and through business techniques and every way that you don't need to go into business or you don't need to go into the corporate world in order to be in this club. You can have any interests, like, you know, you like shopping, you like clothes or something, or maybe you like sports and advertising. You could go into this club, and it adheres to everybody's, you know, opinion and everything. And this club always needs funding 'cause they are always having competitions. They, some of the competitions happen out of state, so like last year happened in Orlando, Florida. So for funding, they had a fundraiser at Bertucci's. And as you can see, I've said a lot of local restaurants' names in Wilmington, and it's amazing to see how these local restaurants support Wilmington and support the W H S and are happy to be involved in fundraisers. And you can go to the local Chili's or local ninety-nines, and they'll be like, yeah, all the time. Our doors are open for the W H S. We'd love to, you know, donate fifteen percent of your paycheck to the W H S indirectly. You're having great food, and you're also donating money to the W H S. So, you know, you're hitting, we're with two stones. That's the saying, right?
Sure is.
Yeah, yes. Pound the back. Lastly, some events that I wanted to catch you up on is that the girls' track team made history by becoming the Winter League Champions. And that is amazing 'cause that's just, I'm not on track, but when I heard that news, Twitter was blowing up. Everyone's just like, oh, my God, they made history. I'm just like, wow, we're coming up. Like, everybody, be ready next year. And also, next week is the France and Italy trip, which is coming up, and the Costa Rica trip is also coming up. And I appreciate these trips because it allows the W H S student body to, you know, go into a much more diverse culture and come out of this town, not out of the state, but out of the country. And having that opportunity just makes us more, as I've always said, open-minded and diverse. And maybe these kids will never get the opportunity again, but because of Wilmington, they got this opportunity to experience new culture in a new way rather than sitting in a foreign language class or a history class, learning about it through textbooks. You're learning about it hands-on. And due to that, ending my report, I have a quote by Barry Lopez that is, "Diversity is not a characteristic of life. It is a condition necessary for life, like air and water." Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
We love your quotes at the end every time, too. That's really neat.
I told you, tradition, tradition.
Perfect. What year were you in?
Me?
Yes.
I am class of two thousand eighteen.
Just sticking around for a while.
Yes, yes. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We appreciate how you give these reports. They're wonderful. All right, and our next, oh, our budget hearing.
We've got till seven-thirty.
Till seven-thirty, so we'll come back.
Yep.
All right, so we'll go on to all business. Oh. Tonight's, I am off. We went right over the superintendent's report. Sorry. We love a superintendent's report.
Great. So I'm pleased to share with you some wonderful news about some student achievements here at Wilmington High School. We had twelve Wilmington High School students who received the Massachusetts Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Twelve students. So I wanted to just note who those were, and we've sent letters congratulating to them, letters to them congratulating them. Winning the Gold Key Award in Photography was Callie O'Connell. Winning the Silver Key Award in Design was Devon Langenfeld. Winning the Silver Key Award in Personal Essay/Memoir was Timothy Scalona. Winning the Silver Key Award in Sculpture, Jamie Shanning. And winning the Silver Key Award in Personal Essay/Memoir was Charlotte Sulick. And then honorable mentions, we had an honorable mention for Ceramics and Glass to Kathryn Bischoff. An honorable mention for Poetry to Sophie Consorti. An honorable mention for Ceramics and Glass to Christine Lee. An honorable mention for Design to Jared McGowan. An honorable mention for Drawing and Illustration to Morgan McIntyre. Honorable mention for Photography to Christopher Patone. Honorable mention for Film and Animation to Lilian C. An honorable mention for Ceramics and Glass to Jamie Shanning. And an honorable mention for Personal Essay/Memoir to Charlotte Sulick. So she won two awards. O'Connell's photograph will compete, so Callie O'Connell, who won the Gold Key Award, her photograph will compete against all other Gold Key winners from around the country for national medals. And O'Connell, Langenfeld, Scalona, Shanning, and Sulick are all invited to attend a ceremony at the Museum of Fine Arts in early March. So we congratulate our students for some impressive accomplishments, yes. Also, just wanted to share from my own personal experience that I had the pleasure and privilege last evening of attending Pippin with eighteen of our high school students. They were supposed to have attended Pippin on Friday, but it got called because of snow. And unfortunately, Mr. Luciano was unable to make it on Tuesday. So myself and actually Jen Han volunteered to chaperone, and the kids were just phenomenal. It was a great show, but the kids, they're just fantastic. They just were so well-behaved, and they really enjoyed the show. And it was great to hear their perspective on the story of Pippin, which is, if you don't know the story, is very, it's a lot of life lessons there. And just so that you know about some upcoming dates, February fifteenth is President's Day. We have no school, and all the offices are closed. And then from the fifteenth to the nineteenth is our February vacation when schools are closed. On February twenty-third, there is at the Wilmington High School Auditorium at seven P. M. the one-act preview night. So we're just starting to get into our late winter and spring production seasons. I know, you know, those we follow in the future, but we've got some great plays at the middle school, Willy Wonka, and then the high school in May will be doing Cats. So we've got some exciting productions coming up.
Nice. Wilmington is so lucky. There are so many things available. And our students definitely bring up the tradition and keep it going. That's wonderful. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We're going to go next to our second reading and adoption of the school committee policies.
The first one that we have up here is the social media policy. Again, you had already approved this policy. There were some minor changes made pursuant to impact bargaining sessions with the W T A. You have the final version here, so I don't know if there's any questions, but this is a second, this would be a second reading and adoption of that policy.
Okay. We have, oh, I'll just make a comment on this for me, that the person who comes kicking and screaming, holding her heels from social policy, social media, that I feel that you did such a great job on this policy and the policy subcommittee. Every time I could think of something, you've covered it in here, and that's basically all I'm asking is that we have, you know, that people are aware of what we're looking for and how we're looking for it. And this policy is very all-inclusive, it seems to me. You did a really good job on that policy.
Well, we should thank Neil, who was the primary author of this policy. Did some great research to pull together the best of the best that we could find.
Yes, that's wonderful. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments on this one? Okay. We have a recommended motion, move to adopt the social media policy, I J N D D, subject to any bargaining obligations that the committee may have. Mr. Bjork?
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous on that one. Thank you.
The next policy, J I C H, Drug and Alcohol Possession or Use in School Facilities and at School Functions. Really, the major change to this, and it was a major change, was that the policy previously only referenced alcohol and not drugs, so we've updated it to conform with the M A S C recommended policy. This is, again, the policy. We'll take up the regulations pursuant to this policy in the next motion.
Do we have any questions or comments? All right. Recommended motion to adopt alcohol and drug use and possession policy, J I C H. Mrs. Carroll?
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you.
And pursuant to policy, J I C H is J I C H R, which are the Chemical Health Regulations for high school students. And we had a fairly robust discussion about this and hopefully have answered all the questions, but certainly if there's any other questions.
Mrs. Brusad?
I was just going to ask, I know that we put some information out there through social media. Did we get any response from parents?
No, I sent this policy out as an attachment to a Blackboard Connect message, so it went to all the parents in the middle school and the high school, and I did not receive any comments. I also discussed it on a blog post and, again, did not receive any comments.
Thank you.
Could I just ask, this chart at the very end?
Yes.
I didn't understand that.
So this is sort of a guidance chart for folks who are reading the regulations to show that if you, after the first offense, the consequence is a loss of twenty-five percent eligibility. This is just a chart to show you what that translates into in terms of the number of events or games. So, for example, if there are a total of seven events in a season, seven games or events in a season, on the first offense, you would be ineligible for one game or competition. Whereas if there were sixteen to nineteen events or games in a season, that would translate into a loss of four events or games. So it just helps people calculate what the actual penalty is.
Okay, good. Thank you. Let's hope we never have to use it. That'd be nice. Okay, we would move to adopt the, wait a minute, where am I? Number three. Oh, the Chemical Health Regulations, that is. All right. Which would be policy J I C H R. Okay.
I'll allow for that. I moved that we adopt Chemical Health Regulations, J I C H dash R.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll? Second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
The next two policies relate to smoking and tobacco use. They're two separate policies. They appear in two separate portions of the school committee manual. It's not uncommon for that to happen. The first relates to overall governance, while the second is around students and student behavior. And what we did is just, we updated it to reflect the current practice around first, second, and third offenses and also included information here or regulations or policies around the use of e-cigarettes and vapors, since that is a new phenomenon to most of us.
I actually saw a woman with two of those in her hand. She walking into a store, and she put them to the side, but she had two. I won't comment on that. It's downright scary even looking at them personally, but let's hope that our children never get involved in that.
We do, we have had instances of students bringing what are commonly referred to as vapes or vaping is the verb form of vape, the new vernacular.
I don't belong in this world here.
So it's helpful to have this in as a policy so that the student handbooks can be updated to be consistent with the policy.
What is it supposed to do, the vapor thing, instead of cigarettes? They think they don't get cancer?
Yeah, it has, well, it has nicotine in it, but who knows how many other chemicals. It's supposedly an alternative to cigarettes, but certainly it's not an ideal thing to be doing. Oh, it's got nicotine, absolutely.
The kids doesn't think it has nicotine, though. They think it's better than cigarettes.
That's too bad.
And it's flavor, right? It's flavorful.
Really?
Yeah, it has flavor.
Do they?
Yeah, but they still have to have something, though, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's still addictive chemicals.
Yeah.
Still combustion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Inhaling smoke, right?
Well, we need to adopt this one fast.
So there's two separate ones. I would recommend that you have two separate motions, one for each.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to adopt no smoking and tobacco use policy, A D C dash E. Mrs. Carroll?
So moved.
Mrs. Brusad?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. And we'll move to adopt tobacco possession and use policy, J I C G. Mrs. Bonish?
So moved.
Mrs. Carroll? All those in favor? Very good, unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. The policy subcommittee has been working hard. Thank you.
Do you want to move to the F Y seventeen, oh, it's actually F Y sixteen Quarterly Financial Report? If you can squeeze that one over here.
Yes, that was just, that would be good. We're going to do the financial report towards the very end, item eight C.
And we apologize, it says F Y seventeen Quarterly Financial Report. Obviously, we're in F Y sixteen. It's actually the F Y sixteen Quarterly Financial Report.
Okay. And, all right, this is the F Y sixteen Quarterly Financial Report as of February first. Okay?
Thank you. As you can see, our total appropriation for F Y sixteen is thirty-six million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars. Through February first, we've spent and encumbered thirty-five million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred five dollars, leaving us a balance of two hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars. And I have explanations of any variances, but as you can see, we're in good shape here. Some of that will get eaten up, but I have no issues or no concerns with meeting the bottom line at the end of the school year, at the end of the fiscal year, so we will end the fiscal year in the black.
Does anyone have, does anyone have any questions or comments about this? I think it's much brighter. It's so much easier to read. Well, thank you. I thought it was really good. All right. We don't need a vote. Do we need a vote on this? No, we don't need a vote. Okay. We're supposed to have a budget hearing at seven-thirty, so that's what we're kind of working around.
Do you want to try to squeeze in the school calendar?
School calendar would be good. All right, that's item eight D. We go to item eight D.
And you know, each year, the school committee is charged with adopting the school calendar for the subsequent year. So this will be for the school year two thousand sixteen-seventeen. We do, we put on here, you know, as many of the dates that we're aware of, but in the real items that you're voting are the start, the start date and the end date with and without snow days, as well as the vacation schedules for the school year.
Does anyone have any questions about these?
The one thing that I did want to point out is that there was a lot of discussions amongst superintendents in the area about the twenty-third of December. Vacation starts on Monday. The Christmas holiday is on, obviously, on Sunday. Some districts are choosing to go on the twenty-third. Some districts are choosing to not go on the twenty-third. And so I chose the middle of the road to do an early dismissal on the twenty-third.
Perfect. Very good idea. Yeah, like that. That's very good. Do we have an early dismissal before Thanksgiving also?
We do, yes.
Good.
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. That sounds great. Oh, and the last day of school, the twentieth?
If all of the five snow days were used, correct.
Yeah. And that's an early dismissal day?
Correct.
Yeah, that's good. All right. Any other questions? Remember the times we used to have discussions on Good Friday? We tried it, and that didn't work, so we have the day off on Good Friday?
Yep.
So I entertain a motion to approve the two twenty-sixteen dash twenty-seventeen school year calendar as presented. Okay, Mrs. Carroll?
So moved.
You're quick tonight. Mrs. Brusad, second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Twenty-five seconds.
Okay. I think it's, we're good. All right. What we're going to do is we're going to move into budget hearing, public session for discussion of the recommended budget. And could we have a motion to move into public session? Okay, Mrs. Carroll?
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Superintendent Delai?
So the purpose of the public hearing is to hear any public feedback on the budget? Seeing none?
Don't feel badly. There hasn't been any for years.
Do you want me to take a look in the hallway?
You know what? I think that's attributed to the fact that you have made it so transparent and given so many opportunities for people to be listening and hearing about the budget and to get their questions answered, so I think it's really a compliment to the staff, to you and the staff.
So, thank you. Absent any public comment, I think you can close the public hearing, and then you can move to your vote to adopt, if you're so inclined.
All right. Could we, who'd like to close the public hearing? Mr. Bjork?
Sure, I'll move to close the public hearing.
And second, Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Now I'd entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommended budget for F Y seventeen. Mrs. Bonish?
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Yeah, now. Where are we?
We are on the superintendent's mid-cycle.
Is he here tonight? It's nice.
Unless you want to, do you want to allow the last group?
Oh, sure. Oh, okay, yes. Neil, would you like to go first so that you can? Since you did such a good job on that last one.
Yeah.
Working our way up here.
All right.
This is the one-to-one device initiative.
There we go. Okay. Ooh, it's warming up.
Who do you got with you today?
Oh, yes. Jen Fiddler and Lucy Belito. Molly. You're just hanging out. Yeah. They're on the District Technology Committee, and they came to support the one-to-one for next year. So is it significantly warmed up?
I think they can't hear you.
Oh, can you guys not?
I think when you stand away from the microphone.
I can't present and sit down at the same time. I need to move around. Are they going to yell at me if I take this microphone?
I think you're good.
Don't yell at me. How's that? Is it better? All right. Okay. So this is our Wilmington Public Schools one-to-one Chromebook plan. I'm using a different presentation format. It's Prezi, so try not to get carsick. Okay. So. There we go. So you have a copy of the digital learning plan in your packets. That's kind of the beginning of the one-to-one. So kind of formalizes all the thoughts that we've been putting together in the tech task force previously and now the District Technology Committee. I'll just briefly kind of go through. So these are all the pieces of the plan that you have. Differentiation, use of devices to increase differentiation at all. Use of devices to increase differentiation at all grade levels. So just let me reiterate. This is sort of a district-wide and maybe a five-year plan in general, that, that digital learning plan. It's not necessarily, it ties into the one-to-one, but it's not necessarily the one-to-one. So it just, it starts here. Oh, I should probably go back. The digital literacy. Basically, accrual of general technology skills. Why is that flickering? For efficiency and effectiveness in life beyond K-12. Digital citizenship, which I really like to point out is, is, is one of the key things that we want to hit to make sure that students use it safely, ethically, they can protect themselves, they're appropriate online with other, other students, other people, just in general. And, you know, using devices in school with the guidance of, of teaching staff leads students to make correct choices when they use the devices when the teachers are not there. They need some kind of shepherding.
Excuse me, Neil, can I say if someone, if anyone had a question, this, this upset, you know, your presentation?
My flow?
If we asked your flow?
No, I interrupt my, I upset my own flow every time I go through.
Okay, so if anyone comes up, because there's so much that perhaps is better to have a question right here.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Yes. So I thought we'd do this, this way. I just wanted to, I had put that out, the digital citizenship, the ethical use of technology. And what I was, I hadn't mentioned that in here to myself, is really, really important. And my question is, how do you get the students to learn this? Do we have a, like, a big plan for that, or is it just merely pointing out to them circumstances when that wasn't good use or proper use, or I'm not sure how we get them to be ethical?
So I think there are, there are a few, actually have a. There are a couple different ways. We, 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 right now, it's more, the curriculum that we have for this is mostly taught through the media specialists in the elementary schools and then media specialists in the secondary, but more in the classroom at the secondary. As, you know, this is a matter of course in the class, usually at the very beginning of the year, teachers will point out, you know, things to do and not to do online, especially if they're using online things in their course. We do have set curriculum, especially more at the elementary, but as we're building, we're taking on the, bless you, the Aspen IMS, which is the curriculum sort of builder inside of Aspen. As we build the curriculum for all the, all of the subjects, it'll give, give the integration specialists a much easier door into where they can place the, the topics of ethical use in all of the different points of, of digital citizenship. Right now, it's kind of difficult. We know some curriculum, but it's not all in one place. So we're, we're working towards making that a much more integrated piece of the curriculum.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Digital access, I should, I should mention that Dan Catigan and former safety officers, they do visit the schools and do classes on, on internet safety too.
Excellent.
Yeah. Digital access and equity, which, which, you know, is incredibly important. To me, it's where I veer way into the socialist realm. So, you know, especially with this one-to-one device initiative, there won't be, you know, any kid who doesn't have the same thing that other kids have. We'll never, we'll always make sure that there's a device or access for every kid who, who needs it, so. That's mostly what digital access and equity is. Personalized learning. We can, teachers can use the devices to personalize the learning for students. I don't know if I need to go into that one. Should I go into that? No, you got it. P D, we can't do anything without P D. You know, teachers don't know how to use the devices that kids have, then we're just buying a two-hundred-dollar brick. And family learning, again, extending that use of the device to the family so that parents can help their kids use the device and use it ethically. Again, you know, empowering parents to continue what we do in school, outside of school. So that's the digital learning plan chunk. So that's where we start. We want all those things. And then we get into the one-to-one where we can hammer out a lot of those things. We can check off the list for a lot of those things in the digital learning plan. So what is a one-to-one? A one-to-one is a great vehicle, a tool to get us to the top of the mountain, saw the mountain right there. Here's what we got to get to. All right. So a one-to-one is basically, it's just a ratio, right? One device to one student. So that's where the one-to-one comes from. We want to base our one-to-one on Chromebooks. It's, I've done a lot of research around the, mostly, you know, United States. The Chromebook seems to be the device to go to. I, I have peer districts that I've talked to and, you know, the ones that have gone to like iPads and other devices, they're now going, ditching those. I think Burlington's going to the Chromebook now. It's just such a low-cost device, you know, we can offer it to every kid. It has everything that they need to do here and at home. And in terms of integrating it on different platforms, iOS, Windows, Android, everything, it works on everything. So as long as you have a browser, you can, you can get basically, you know, an entire office-type suite of applications. So we really, addition to that, we can, we can also use it for, well, I'm going to get into that. We can also use it for. Here, I'll go through that. For those collaboration, communication and content creation. So the Chromebook, the nice thing about the Chromebook is that it has a decent-sized screen. The one that I'm proposing with this is an eleven-inch screen. You can also get a thirteen-inch screen if you'd like. They also come in a fourteen-inch flavor, but not from Dell. The, they promote collaboration because it's a, it's Google and Google's tools all integrate together and everyone can collaborate on any given document that any teacher has put out there. It's, it's built for collabora, collaboration and communication. So it's, it ties in with, with everything that we're, we're trying to do. Encourages responsibility and ownership. We're, we're proposing a, a parent purchase device and the ownership of that device and using that device on a day-to-day basis encourages responsibility. Facilitates blended learning activities. So it's hard to do blending learning activities when there's, when you only have one side of that equation, right? You've only got the lecturing in a classroom. With no device, you can't have the other side. So everything's trending towards blended learning right now. It's, it's, you know, incorporates the flipped classroom idea. If every student in the classroom has a device, they can, they can use that device, be shown how to use that device after school, then use that device after school with personalized learning, with, you know. I want to try and say, video, audio. If your, if your child is, you know, learns more from a classroom setting, you've got that side. You obviously need the classroom side to show kids how to use some of the things that they find on the internet with online classes and audio and podcasts and everything else. With no device, you can't get the audio, you can't get the video. You can't reinforce the things that you're saying in school with, with media, other primary sources that you can gather together to show the kids after school. Allows for individual and collaborative activity, so kids can use it just by themselves or they can just quickly share it out and other kids can work on it with them. It's not cheating anymore, it's collaboration. Helps develop a community of learners. You have kids using, developing things on their own, they're having more fun, they're collaborating with their peers and developing things in a, in a platform where they're all on their devices and they can, they can work together where they're not just, you know, this old sit-and-get-in-a-classroom type model. Okay, so back to the mountain. First, climbing up the mountain. How are we making this happen? So this is the process for.
May I just ask you a question about the Chromebooks?
Yes.
If, I agree with having like a consistent platform, but there are going to be people who already have a device. Is that going to be allowed? Are they going to be able to use their own device if they have one?
Yes. So we have a, I've drawn up a specifications sheet that has basically the minimum specifications for a Chromebook. You know, just, just like you said, to keep the, the, a platform consistent across, so everybody has a device that's going to run as quickly as the next kid. So when the teacher's going through a lesson, it's going to move along with them. If you have a Chromebook, you can bring that in, we'll get it on the network. The only, the only addition would be a twenty-eight-dollar license to join on the, the Google domain for the district. And that's, that's all you need if you already have a Chromebook, yeah?
What if they don't have a Chromebook? What if that parent says, geez, this is all great, but I just bought an iPad or a MacBook or a Dell laptop or?
Right. So this program is not. We're, the problem with those devices and in doing this is the simplicity for the teachers in order to instruct in the classroom. I think with those devices, they could probably use them at home and have this as their school device since it's not incredibly expensive. I would, we're trying to stay away from anything that's not a Chromebook for this program. And other schools have done that and they've had success. So the other, the additional piece to that is that we can do standardized testing on the Chromebook. So from, from the Google domain, we can make the devices, you know, we can do it as a, as a giant group or for specific classes. Make it so that when they boot up and they sign in, go straight into the exam and they can't do anything but do that exam in the Chromebook and then turn it off when they're out of that exam time. So.
Neil, can I ask you about that?
Yes.
I can't envision that at all. Would they do it through your office? Who would be doing, how would they do that?
Lock the, lock the Chromebook into the, into the.
Right, would the teacher be doing that in the morning or the nighttime, or I don't get this.
Are you talking about standardized testing per se, or?
He's talking about if you were administering the park.
Right.
He has the ability through a Google app to go in and, and do that. So it wouldn't be the individual teacher, it'd be the team that's responsible for preparing the devices for the administration of the assessment.
Oh. Would it be going through Neil's office?
Mm-hmm. He would have this control if you will.
Yeah, we just arrange it. I mean, we do lots of stuff like that.
Sort of like the way we can control the lighting and the energy management systems through a central location, he can control the devices.
Right, it, when, when it.
Julie has this question to observe.
I do. I'm just, again, I'm trying to picture this. So if I purchase my child a device, such as the Chromebook, through the school, that's our personal device or my child's personal device? So you would have control of that?
So what we have control of is not the device itself, but the account, which is under the WPSK12.com account. So, so say that the student, the student owns the device.
Yeah.
They log in as, you know, if they were, you know, presumably over thirteen, because they're not supposed to have an account under thirteen on any social media site by law. They would, could log in as whatever at Gmail and it would be their regular Chromebook. We wouldn't actually be controlling the device, we'd be controlling their login.
Okay.
For a set period of time?
For a set period of time.
Yeah, we're controlling, we're more controlling our network and their access to our network.
Okay.
Not so much, I think is a better way to look at it than the actual device, when they're logged on to our network.
Okay.
But when they're not, when they, if you, like, right now, I have a device, I can log into my Gmail and it's, and they can't. But if I log in as at WPSK12, then I'm basically logging into our domain.
Yep.
So he's got control from our domain.
Right, so maybe I didn't explain that so well, I think, yeah. So we own, we, we have what's called Google Apps for Ed and you guys don't understand that? Or should I just briefly go over it? So it's W, everything's WPSK12.com, so all the kids have that. It's, we'll say email address, but that is their login as well to Google. And we control that umbrella of WPSK12.com as it exists as Google. So we own that, we own Google in there. So, you know, since we manage those, those usernames, if you go in as, as, as one of the kids, it's, we have that control over those.
And I think it's important to recall too that the Chromebook doesn't have, really doesn't have internal storage. So even when you have it, it's not like you're accessing files stored on a device because those are stored for, you know, if you're using a Chromebook, presumably in your Google Drive folder.
And you can't add anything to it. Am I correct in understanding with a Chromebook, you can't add anything else? It's what's there, what you're accessing through Google, that's it? There's no adding games or anything like that?
Yeah, there are Google Chrome apps that you can add.
Google Chrome apps, but my child couldn't go and download some game from somewhere else and add that to their device?
They could add it to their account and that, which caches on locally on the Chromebook to some degree. So they could go to an app store, just like you would on your phone, and, and download an app. But it would exist as part of their profile. So when they log into any, anybody, and they could grab anybody's Chromebook and log in as them and it would have all the stuff that they've set up. So there are apps, we have control of the apps that they can use in our, when they log in as a WPSK12.com. So we have blocked out like proxies, things and, you know, not many things, but, you know. And, and when they're in here, they're also subject to our internet filter. So, and we can, so let me go through some of that. So, so, so we also have Safe Search turned on for all of our accounts. So the Safe Search means that when they're logged in with our account on the Chromebook, they can only, they, basically, everything they search is basically like of content filtering. And that, that exists outside of the district, whether they're here or not, so. So we can filter at home as well, unless they go and sign up with another, with their own Gmail account and then. But I think as a, as a, as a parent, I think that's kind of a, one of those parental management things, so. Good? Good?
That's it, yep.
Yeah?
Good, thank you.
Paul's going to get mad at me if I go too long here. So the rollout strategy is year one, we want to start with just grade nine. Kind of get our feet wet. It's still a good number of students. We roll out to nine, so the incoming eighth graders, we would get them, we'd get this all information out to the, you know, we wanted to run it through here first, you know. But, you know, as we move along, we want to get the information out to the, to everybody who's going into ninth grade next year and get them in the process. We have a Dell website set up where they can go straight to Dell and purchase the device online. So that's still getting, we'll tweak here and there to bring the price down. So hopefully, grade nine come in, we'll have it set up for the next year. Year two, grades eight and nine, so that will be grades eight, nine and ten, we'll have Chromebooks. Grades seven and eight, so then we'll have seven, eight, nine and ten, eleven. And then six and seven, which will go six through twelve. So in that fourth year, you know, at the beginning of that fourth year, we'll have all, everybody six through twelve. Now, there's, you know, a lot of interest from grades four and five right now to be included within that four years. So we, you know, we can change this at any time, it doesn't have to, we're not set in stone. This is just how we're looking at it right now. Yeah, Julie?
I was just going to say the other. I was just going to say the other thing that we may see, and I hope that we'd be able to allow for, is let's just say, for example, I have an incoming ninth grader that we would be, my family would be purchasing a Chromebook for. But I also have an incoming fifth grader, an incoming third grader. From a family financial perspective, can I just all do it at once and get them for all three of them or whatever the case may be?
You do it all at once. We're not, we're not disallowing Chromebook use at any other level. So, we're focused on getting all the grade nines. If you've got a child who's going into tenth grade next year or eleventh or twelfth or, I want to kind of stay away from the middle school a little bit more, because we're still doing some more PD at the middle school. But, you know, anywhere at the high school next year, because you're going to have ninth graders taking classes with tenth graders and eleventh graders and it might actually be easier if kids in the upper levels have Chromebooks to use in some of the classes where the teachers want to use them. So, yes.
Could I just add, if you are purchasing devices for your third grader, fourth grader, what have you, unless we're willing to open up the electronics device policy to allow that to happen, they can purchase them, but they couldn't necessarily use them unless we're allowing them.
Right.
Allowing that to happen.
My only question there too is if you buy them, at a certain point, how, what's the useful life generally?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, basically, the, the Chromebooks, I, I'm hopeful with the Chromebooks, because the, I don't, I want to say how heavy the apps are, the, the Google apps are. They're not that heavy and the, the spec that we've done for these, you know, they should last five years. You know, I, I'd be surprised if they weren't still usable in seven years. Of course, our spec will have upgraded at that time, but, I mean, if kids have a device and it's still working and at the same level, you know, we'll have to check out, you know, it's hard to tell how, how advanced those Google apps will be in five to seven years. So I guess we'll play that by ear as to what, what might need to get upgraded.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonish has a question. She's got a question, I'm going to hit her in here.
So that was one of my questions, was the life of the computer. Because it, it, I, I wouldn't think it would admit that it would last from sixth to twelfth grade. So, when, when you present this to the sixth grade parents, would you let them know that it's possible you're going to have to buy another one in ninth or tenth grade or even, you know, earlier, depending on what happens to it? But, and then my other question was, you said something a bit about being over thirteen years old, what was that for?
Yeah, the, the COPPA, which is C-O-P-P-A, which is the Childhood Online, Something Protective Act. Can't think of what the other, for social media, there's a, there's a federal law that, kids, children under thirteen cannot create a social media account. I think that's, not sure if it's, they can with the, the permission of an adult, but I don't think so.
So then what would that have to do with this? Because sixth and seventh year, under thirteen, so why is that?
Well, it's, it's, so, that's not, that doesn't come into play with the Google Apps for Ed, our, our things that are, the school ones, right. Because we, it's all totally protected. The COPPA is more limiting the exposure of students, of children to, you know, their accidentally submitting information about themselves or their friends on the internet. And, you know, many of, the other things, but that, that privacy part is, is definitely a big piece of it, so.
Okay, Mrs., I'm not sure who was first, Mrs. Carroll?
I have a question. Back to you, said, if you're in a classroom, grade nine is in a classroom with ten and eleven, twelve, and that teacher wants to use the Chromebooks, but the rest of the grades don't. So is that twelfth, that senior, is they're going to have to do the Chrome, are they going to have to buy the Chromebook to be with that teacher? I mean, how is that going to work?
No, not necessarily.
Some of the kids are going to have it and some of the kids aren't.
Right. So, so during that transition period, we do have the Chromebook carts still in, in the, in the school. So if the teacher is expecting to do, you know, a, a lesson where every student does need to have the Chromebook, she can have that ready in the classroom, ready to go for kids that don't have their own. And additionally, even the addition of, of five or six Chromebooks allows you to do, you know, work centers of like four kids, where you're doing some research or, you know, listening to some audio, doing some video. Doing an interactive lesson on whatever it might be, an online dissection or whatever it is. But, yeah, I mean, you know, five devices is better than no devices. If teachers, that's part of the, that's where the PD comes in too, where we can show teachers how to utilize five devices in a classroom. I have other slides.
I know, I know. I did my homework, I went through, so this question, I'm trying to fit my questions in with, with the slides as they come up. If we're starting with grade nine or pick a grade, at that point, we say, okay, we want every kid in this level to have a Chromebook or a device.
Like say the high schools.
So will those kids be expected to bring those every day, just like they would a notebook and a pen or a notebook and a pencil?
Uh, yes.
And what happens if they forget it at home or leave it on the bus or drop it and smash it? Could happen.
So, I, I, what I like to say about, about this is, and, and it's what I've heard from a lot of districts, is that the first way to approach this is to think about it in the way that you would approach any student discipline or action conduct. Forget about the electronic part of it. It's just like anything else, you know, you've got-
Like a notebook or a pencil.
Right, I mean, we spend, we spend two hundred books on some, on a textbook sometimes. And if the student loses that in their hundred dollar backpack with a couple other books, it's more than the Chromebook's worth. So, and they, it's, it's kind of the same, same approach. Where if a teacher takes it-
I think you're asking about the loss of potential instructional access.
Yeah, I'm just thinking-
Is there a loaner available?
Yeah.
Yep.
I would assume we've got the Chromebook carts there, so they could pull one from that for that day or what have you. And then I, I know that as we get through this, there is some insurance and things like that, protection of the device.
Yep.
That would be available.
Yep.
Gotcha.
So, parents, well, we'll get into that, so.
I'll wait.
Okay.
I have a question.
You sure?
You might answer it as we go along.
Okay. So, that's the first step. Getting up the mountain. Why Google Chromebook? So, I, I touched on this already a little bit. So affordability, usability, deployability and supportability. So affordability, it's a very affordable device that, that does everything that you need it to do. So, that's a giant benefit. Storage and charging, carts, cases, software licenses, just other things to keep in mind that you might need for a Chromebook, a one-to-one Chromebook. Usability. Does a device, does a device do, do the things that students need in an age-appropriate way? I'll start and flick her again. More traditional form factor that includes an integrated keyboard is better for writing assessments. The problem with the touchscreen devices, not touchscreens with, with keyboards, but tablets, is that it's a lot more difficult to type on, create. We want our kids to be creative. We want them to be able to interact with what they're seeing on the screen and not just, just swallow it. So, this is a much better fit for twenty-first century learning. Boots in seconds, you hit that button and the thing is on. So it's not like you're waiting a minute or two for a laptop to boot up in the classroom. That's one of the other things that we're, you know, if a kid has another kind of device, a Windows device or an Apple device, you click it, you're waiting for it to boot for a minute while all the kids are already moving along in their Chromebook. It runs modern-based web tools, apps and services. Park and TestNav are just two of the online tests, who knows what MCAS 2.0 will be, but most likely it will work in a Chromebook better than any other device. Deployability. It's easy to get these things on our network. It's easy to control them, like I said, you know, do the safe search and be able to have them boot into tests. They don't need to be imaged like laptops do, like laptops, Windows laptops, MacBooks. You take in what's called an image, it's basically you take the whole computer system, operating system and everything, the way it's set, exactly the way you have it with all the apps and everything. And you take that and you can push it down to another device. That process takes a long time sometimes. So, with the Chromebooks, we, you don't have that, that same issue, because it's just the blank Chrome operating system. You know, depending on the deployment model, students can even just take them out of the box and start using them with their WPSK12.com account. Why Chromebooks? Supportability. They're super light. They're easy to, for students to use. They automatically update themselves. So, as, every time they turn them on, they just get updated in the background. It's, it's, doesn't require us to do anything like a, like a larger IT department in order to make this work. So that's also a consideration for budget. They're, you know, they're easily managed with the tools I was talking about. And we can swap them out with anything. It's not like the students get this, everything set up on there, like they're using their, in, you know, they're in Miss Fiddler's class and they're using online. They're using graphical editing software that's on that device and if you give them another laptop, it doesn't have that software on it, now they, they can't do it. Like I said before, that it's, it's all in their profiles, they just hop on a, on a school Chromebook and everything comes in exactly the way they have it. So we don't have to worry about kids not being able to access things when they don't have their device. Because Wilmington, on the way up the mountain, we have to take a break at the Winfield Elm and eat a Baldwin apple. Did that in Photoshop.
That was good.
So, how are we making this happen? Happen. Purchasing. Each student purchases their own Chromebook from Dell. We're trying to do the Dells, they've got the price way down. Dell has a lot of features that are, it's rugged, it's the, from all the schools I've talked to, the Dell one is the best. It's got a big rubber ring that goes around the outside and you can toss it, yeah, I know. It's got a protected keyboard, you can pour Coke on it and then drain it, it's got a weep hole on the side, you just go like this. Seriously, go like that and drain it out and you can pour water on there and drain it out the side. So it's, it's, it's somewhat, has a, it meets, I forget which military spec, but it's, it's a durable device. And if the kids do just totally destroy it, it's, you know, it's, it's two hundred and fifty bucks, it's not, it's not a, like this, this laptop here on the market, you know, not school prices, like a fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar device. So, they're not dropping this coming off the bus. So, we've got the Dell purchase page set up, I talked about that. Students on free and reduced lunch, that's the National School Lunch Program. We have eleven percent in the district. Those families would all get, if they, we have a, a form that allows them to check off and say that my department can access that data from the, from the food services. Because that's very protected data. And once they give us access to that and we can verify that they're on the NSLP for free and reduced lunch, then we'll just go ahead and order the device for them. And they would basically just loan it from us. So they would have it as long as they're in the schools, we, they would have a, a device that functions at the level that it, it needs to according to our, our spec. So those kids wouldn't have to worry. It would look like all the rest of the kids' devices, so they wouldn't have to, you know, be sensitive about carrying a device that looks different. We also have an application process for families that are five percent above that eleven percent. Qualify, so the, the qualifications for NSLP, they're all posted, it's a matrix depending on your family income and how many kids you have. So, based on your family structure, five percent above that max that they have, does this make any sense? Would be eligible for a fifty percent reduction. So they're not, they don't qualify for free or reduced lunch, but, but probably need aid. And anyone could apply for a scholarship or payment schedule. You guys saw it, yeah?
Discount for multiple kids.
Yeah, so, so we have, so this, this scholarship, we're, this part is, is gray for a reason, because we're, we can consider, and I'll do this with Paul, I think we're going to put together a, a review committee, I suppose. To look at all these scholarships and, and judge how these scholarships will be, will be, what the reduction will be, maybe we work out, you know, everybody's different. Maybe it's a, maybe it's a two-year payment schedule, maybe it's a three-year, maybe it's a four or five, however long you're going to be in the district. You know, maybe it's a certain percentage reduction and you pay a certain amount. I guess it, it all depends on, on what we work out with, with what parents can afford.
Okay, maybe this is where I should say this. The more you're going into this, the more strongly I feel that we need to bring this before at least some set of parents. And we have to see what their reaction is. Because sitting here, if I had three parent, if I had three children and I saw you roll out, which I think is the right way to do it, definitely. I, I'm not sure if I had three children and they hit those particular years, that's two hundred or three hundred dollars times that many children. It might not seem a lot to other people, but you're always deciding which, where shall I spend my money, here or there? And I'm just not sure, we, I don't know if anyone feels the same way I do, but I-
It wouldn't be the same year then, right?
My only thought there is if you have kids that are coming up in those ages, they're going to be looking for electronic devices, all their friends are going to have them. And if you can steer them towards Chromebooks instead of iPads and other laptops, you'll actually be saving money.
I think what you're going to say though is if you're, if you have that situation where you just happen to have, you know, kids, I don't even know how that would happen really, in the same year. Maybe two kids in the same, oh right, twins and then another one in the next grade up.
No, but eventually it's going to be grades six through ten, through twelve.
So let me-
Yes, you're adding each year. You're not adding all of them in the same year. So you might have a child in the sixth, seventh, I mean, the eighth grade, they have that device, they keep that device. The next year you have a child in the seventh grade, they're the next grade, so then that next year you have the next student coming on, but the chances that you have-
Oh, they're not buying them the same year.
They wouldn't have to buy them the same year.
Right.
Unless you move into the district, into one of those grades. But let me also reiterate the, that the families, that it's a matrix for that, for that program. So it, it, it considers your income and then the number of students, children you have in your family. So it, that, that, that burden of the additional students, children, my children are a burden, is factored into that matrix, so it's kind of already built into there.
So, there's multiple ways that you might qualify for assistance. You know, if you're not eligible for free and reduced lunch because your income is above the threshold, then you may qualify for this fifty percent reduction, because you're above the threshold, but you're within this range that's been established. Even if that's not the case, you can always apply for a scholarship. You can say, I have a hardship because I have three kids that I'm buying devices for, and then, you know, presumably there'll be some sort of sliding scale discount that's offered. Or you could say, I've got three kids, that's nine hundred dollars, well, let me pay it off, let me pay it off over three years. So then you're paying it off and it's not so much- So we try, we try to create a set of options that would address any, all these different types of financial needs that could present themselves.
Yeah, so, I mean, like the fifty percent reduction would probably be, would be probably a total of about a hundred and thirty dollars. And then that, I mean, if you were to break that out over three years, you're talking about like forty-two dollars a year. So if you break that down into eight months, it's five dollars a month for a school year, over three years, which is, you know, a coffee a month.
It doesn't apply to me, so I, I don't really-
Yeah, so we tried to make it, we tried to make this program as affordable as possible.
But my point is, sitting here and having to, are we having to vote on this?
No.
No, this is just a-
We're not voting on this, we're just putting this in?
Mm-hmm.
You've already, you're, you voted for it in that it's in part of the budget, so-
For Chromebooks, but I thought that was for school Chromebooks.
Yeah, I mean, for the future, like the capital plan has a future subsidy in it potentially to offset the cost of the Chromebooks that will be offered as part of this program, so, yeah. And you've already, the policy decisions that you're making are going- And you've already, the policy decisions that you're making are gonna impact, you know, obviously our ability to, to roll this out as well. But it doesn't, the, other than what we've included as a subsidy that's included in the capital plan, and we actually could, we were able to remove that for FY seventeen because of the, the donations that we have been pledged and others are still working. We actually, the school business partnership has, is working to also provide additional funding. It doesn't have a budgetary impact.
Right. So the, 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 the problem I see is if we don't move on this for next year, I think our students will be at a disadvantage, um, next door, neighboring towns who've, who are already putting these things or have put these things in place already. So I do, I do think it's important to, um, to start in this direction for sure.
I guess I'm reacting to the fact that I sat here before and listened to the whole thing about the, we had to have the laptops. Burlington had to have notebooks and a lot of pressure at that time for us to make some choices, which fortunately we were, um, what is that word? We weren't, we were, um.
Reticent?
Not reticent, what is that they say? That the, um, okay, conservative. We were conservative and we didn't go with all that. No, we're doing away with all our books. Because it just seems to me, and everyone hasn't always been on the committee, I've been on for a long time now, just seems to me something new comes up the block and we have to have it as a, as a, as a, not as just us as a school system, but many schools do that and they, they rush to get something. And then with, um, these computers and everything, they're outdated the next year or two years later and you have to have something else. And so I feel nervous that, um, this is a huge change in my mind. I feel nervous about this because of what happened in Burlington and these other places. I hope we don't do that and I see that you are trying to cover everything, all the bases. Most important to me is the professional development for the teachers. Because if the teachers can't figure out how to use this, it's never gonna happen. And I think that's what's been happening in other communities. We are not supplying the professional development that these teachers need. And not we, but we as educators. And I think it's really important that number one, the parents understand what's happening. And number two, that the teachers get, I would support any kind of professional development that could help them.
Yeah, so if I could just talk about, I mean, the parents are already out. I mean, this was a big issue, a big topic of conversation during my entry plan process, which is why do all these districts around us have a one-to-one initiative? And some, like Burlington, have a one-to-one initiative where the district is funding the devices because they receive some pretty significant funding from folks like Sun Microsystems. Others, like on the other side, maybe Reading, do it through BYOD. So ours is BYOD. We're just facilitating the purchase by going this way. I think it did help Wilmington in some ways that you were conservative. And you were conservative basically to more, I think to resource constraints. You didn't have the endowment that Burlington has. But I think Burlington has also learned a lesson that we were able to learn from them, which is if they had to do all over again, they would've gone with the Chromebook. So this is a, a low-cost device that's going to address the need, the significant needs that was raised by parents to meet during the entry plan processes, say, we're behind the times. Why are we not, you know, providing these devices? They're already being used significantly at the, at the high school level with the Chromebook carts that we got as part of this building project. So we're just facilitating that to spread even more. And I think the reason why, as Neil said earlier, that we're starting with ninth grade and then moving down is to facilitate the scaffolding of that PD so that they can. But at the high school level, I don't really know, other than teachers having an understanding of all the different tools that are available and how to use them. I think the kids are actually already there to a large extent. But yes, I think that's why we've decided to implement on at this scale. So it's not overwhelming to teachers and all of a sudden, one day, nobody's got a device and the next day, everybody's got a device.
Exactly.
So just to add on to that, um, I will say that, uh, at the time when, when Burlington did start their one-to-one, I was not a fan of the, of the iPad for, um, educational use at that time. I didn't think it, it really adapted itself to the four Cs very well. And, um, I, I, we, there was definitely, um, a, a decision that we wouldn't go in that direction at that time. For that reason, that we didn't think there was a device that really was affordable, that we could do this with until now. And now the Chromebook's been out for roughly four years. And, um, it's proven itself, um, in schools to people who are early adopters. And I think we have that, that, um, background to rely on. And the, the other thing I would say is that, uh, the demand at the middle school and the high school, now that we've put these Chromebook carts in, um, is overwhelming. The teachers want to use these carts and they want, we have six carts right now. We had, we're building another cart, uh, next week from spares, uh, because it's constantly signed out. Everybody wants to use it. Julie's here now, uh, Ju, you know, starting this year, um, well, actually she was here at the end of last year. But, uh, Julie Kelly, and she's working with all the teachers, constantly doing one-to-one PD with the Chromebooks. So, uh, teachers are, the momentum's already gathering to the point where, when we start this at the ninth grade level next year, I think there'll be a relief from a lot of teachers that there will be, the kids will have the device and they don't have to go get the cart or they don't have to work with their fellow teachers to figure out a time when they can get the cart. So, um.
And my, my last question in that area would be, um, the laptops and laptop carts that we bought. Are they going to be distributed to if a teacher wants to use those or how, what are we doing with those?
Cars going at the middle school. And now those are all upgraded. Now they're all up to speed, so we've worked on those and, um.
So the teachers could use those instead of the Chromebooks at the time for now?
Yeah, so we have six carts, the middle school rolling around, uh, three Chromebook carts. And now Brenda Lamano's, uh, traveling with those carts and doing one-to-one with Google Apps for Ed. So, um, we're, we're, we're getting there for sure.
Okay, thank you.
We're getting there, Paul. Review, review research and creation of policies. So in terms of the policies, we've, we've, we've started working on these, you know, in anticipation that we're gonna be using more or just to, to get, uh, get these updated. So the acceptable use policy, you've already voted on as the social media policy as of like an hour ago. And the electronic device use policy, which we had a lively discussion about last time, which still need to, um, do. I shot that out to the principals and about half of them have weighed in and put their comments on it. So we'll incorporate all their changes. And, uh, some of the teachers who are on the initial policy committee have, have reviewed it too and, and, and made some changes that they thought, you know, on a second pass. So, um, we'll probably have something ready to present at some point in the near future.
Thank you.
Sure. If it doesn't work for everybody, it doesn't work. So, um, we're also, you know, there, we wanna make sure we, we, we cover everything from a legal standpoint on some of these forums, the lease agreements and all that stuff. I've been working with, uh, one of the, uh, council, uh, one of the attorneys from, uh, the town to go through all that. And we've, just the last few days, really hammered out the, the lease agreement and the use and insurance and all that, so. I think that covers it, right? Yeah, um, so, it says today, but that was a while back. But, um, the, um, district technology committee's been reviewing all of the documents as I've been making them. I shoot them out to them and they have gone through them. One of the things we, uh, we're tasked with on that committee was to go through each of those documents for the one-to-one, all the teachers on that committee and look at all the documents and make sure that they're, you know, cause we have people, um, on that committee who are, um, uh, teachers in the district and also parents in the district with multiple children in, in the district. So we got, we had a good rounded out, um, group of constituents. Here we go. Frequently asked questions. My hikers questioning on the mountain. When will students be able to purchase their Chromebook? So I'm looking toward a probably April, end of March, April institution of, of this so that we get all the information out there. We start developing parent nights for Chromebook use. They'd be able to purchase them online and we would try to get everybody by the end of the year, is those two hundred and thirty so kids, to get those Chromebooks by the end of the year. Eleven percent of those, of course, we're gonna buy. The, um, oh, there's something else I was gonna tell you about this. No, I'll come back to it. You know, will the students be able to take their Chromebooks home? Of course, they, they own them. What systems will be in place to keep students safe while using the Chromebook? We talked about that. We've got safe search and our in-house filtering. Will students be able, using the Chromebooks all day while in school? It's up to the teacher and the class, you know, more specifically. What happens when the student damages, breaks or loses a Chromebook? Like I said, same, same kind of thing. And, uh, does the district insure, uh, offer insurance for the Chromebook? For the Chromebooks that we're gonna, uh, purchase in-house, we'll have purchased those with insurance. Some of the items outside of that insurance, uh, what Beverly does, um, is they have a, their Chrome, their one-to-one program is based on a thirteen hundred dollar MacBook. And they have the twenty-three percent, uh, free and reduced lunch population. And they, they have a three-year purchase and lease. Basically, they basically do the purchase and lease for every parent over that, over that period. So every parent pays essentially four hundred and four hundred and fifty dollars a year for their device for the three years. Whereas we're only, um, we're, you know, if needed, we'll split that two hundred and sixty dollars out over three years. So it's, you know, it's relatively affordable as these things go. But they do an in-house, they have a, um, they have a thing like we're setting up now with a, um, basically like a Genius Bar with students that do a lot of the warranty repairs. So the IT department purchases a lot of the, the repair pieces and the kids, um, uh, do that, do that as a class. They do, um, they repair the Chromebooks, use the Chromebooks. Uh, in Beverly, they do it with MacBooks. So it's fun. And there's another district I talked to and they're, and the kids off time, they do, um, coding. They do, you know, C++ and VB coding when there's nothing to repair and they, you know, it's fun. One-to-one integration. This is the top of the mountain. Twenty-first century skills helping our students reach the summit. So, uh, we're meeting the goals of the digital learning plan. Um, all students are, six through twelve are using their devices every day. That's, you know, making sure that the teachers are utilizing them because they've had enough PD, um, to use those in the classroom. And, uh, uh, we can start doing personalized learning, blended learning, uh, classrooms. And digital access is equal for all students, of course, across the board. We have to make sure that that's occurring or this is not, um, hasn't been implemented correctly. So, any other questions?
Yes, Mrs. K.
So I love this idea. And I know you were probably worried when I raised my hand.
No, 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 no.
But I love this idea and I think we're, I think Wilmington is ready for this. And I'd rather see them learning on this than their cell phones. So I'm good with this.
Yeah.
No cell phones this.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree. I think it's a lot easier, um, for a parent. In fact, these, one of the reasons I'm, I'm pushing for the Dell, and I'm not sure how we would make this work or if we could make it work, but the Dell has a light right here that you can program with, with, actually it looks just like this. Has a light right here or right here. Has a, like I think it's a three-color LED. So it would, it, we could program it to light up when, um, the student starts cruising the net when they're supposed to be watching the teacher. So the teacher could see just looking across like blue, you know, sort of like your classroom. We've set up Jen's classroom so that, um, she can lock all the computers with a button and then stop and then, you know, talk through her computer to other kids through the, or, um, or guide a student on their computer from her computer, that kind of thing. I don't know if we could do, we have, well, yeah, we wouldn't be able to do that necessarily. But the, the Dell does have that light, so it's, um, a little bit, um, more helpful. But yeah, it's so easy to just kind of do this in text while you're in class and it's, yeah.
Um, are you going to recommend parents buy some type of insurance for their devices?
Yes, yeah, so that, and on one of my forums right at the top, I, I, I strongly suggest. What I've been thinking about doing is on that Dell page, maybe just having the, the lowest regular warranty be three years. So that, um, you know, just to make sure that, like the kids at that Genius Bar or my tech department doesn't get overwhelmed with warranty, problems that are with devices after they're out of warranty. But yes, I mean, I was strongly, and it's not, it's not expensive. You know, uh, there are plans you can buy on, um, on, uh, on, uh, Amazon. And I've got, I've, I actually, the, the thing that I have, the sheet that I have on, I don't think I have it, I don't think I have it here, but it, it, it lists six different companies that do, um, like drop damage spill warranty, um, coverage. So you can, you know, work out a deal with any one of those six companies and, um, or just purchase it online for your device, type in the serial number and, and they protect any, they, they warranty it from then on.
So it's gonna start in, for ninth graders. Do you anticipate the upperclassmen wanting to get on board and like maybe doing it also?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously not as your initiative, but they might say, well, jeez, they're doing it. Why can't we do it?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, it, it, you know, poses some, some issues just in terms of our getting those devices on our network and the license. And if they just show up with it, we might not necessarily know. Our wireless network, um, we can pick that stuff up and monitor it. So we can see if a Chromebook comes on, that's not in our, in our domain, um, we can find that device. And, um, we've, we've upgraded our wireless this last, uh, summer coming into this year where we've now hit all of the buildings so that we can do stuff like that. So it's a lot more granular what we can get down to.
Could I ask if at our next meeting, you might come at the beginning of the meeting? We'll do him first so he can go home because he's been here a lot of times. But could you just bring a Chromebook and show it to us?
Yeah, I was gonna bring one, bring one in here and I, I didn't think I would have time, but, um, yeah, I mean, it's sure.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, you can come in, you can come in anytime and I'll, I can.
Yeah, and I, that's what I wanted to say. If there's some teachers who are really using them already, is it possible that it's later in the year, school community members, if they wanted to, could go to the classroom and see?
We can do that now with the carts. I was just in, you know, a, a class over at, um, the West where they have one of the, the Chromebook carts and the, the fifth graders using them. So I mean, you could even come in and, uh, see what the fifth graders are doing.
Make sure the teachers are comfortable with us coming though, but, um, yeah, that would, that would be helpful, I think.
They love visitors.
Yeah, I could, I could, um, actually Paul's had a good suggestion. I can leave one at the Roman House that you can just pick up and play with if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Give you some kind of a, we'll just figure out some kind of a login or if you have a, you can just log in with that.
Do we need to monitor me? If I find a site, it wasn't on purpose.
Oh, yeah. Safe search, we should be on.
The superintendent's working on me though. What did I get into, what did I get into?
Uh, Google Drive.
I did Google Drive all on my own.
Oh, nice.
I was very excited.
Well, all my evidence is in Google Drive, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, all mine is in, in Google Drive now. Yeah, share it with Mary.
And I am not against this. What I've been against is the, the idea of not, um, I think the school has to bring these, the devices, that whole thing with any device you could use. I am against that. That in one classroom you'd have all kinds of different advice, devices. But this kind of a program, this is what I've been looking for and I think this is the way to go. And I do support this as the way to go.
And we understand the concern. Your concern is that we wanna make sure that the teachers feel confident and comfortable that in this environment. And the reality is to, to Neil's point, uh, you can, a teacher has, absolutely has the discretion to say, lids down, lids up and can, you'll see as they become more and more comfortable, probably a little bit more screen time. But even at that, I mean, a lot of the research shows and that there's an appropriate percentage of time for kids to be act, um, interacting with technology. It's not a hundred percent. It's not twenty percent. Maybe it's, you know, I've heard forty, fifty. But to truly do personalized learning and blending learning and take advantage of some of the incredible tools that are coming out right now that are really, truly are personalizing the learning experience for a population of students where learner variability is as broad as one could possibly imagine is a great opportunity. Even some of the, and we haven't even talked about a migration to the textbooks, but there are textbooks coming out now where you read the textbook and you take a built-in, uh, and you take an assessment of that chapter. And depending upon your responses, it goes in and it highlights the places where you should reread because you missed that concept or you missed that content. That's just one very simple example of how we can support that learning outside the classroom and when a student comes into the. And when a student comes into the classroom, teachers can access that data as well and know, "All right, these are, this is where I wanna focus my, my face time," and quickly reassess using technology.
Excellent.
You can also do, actually, building off of that, you can do, um, immediate, um, assessment of your classroom. Um, you know, there are websites where kids can go on, and, you know, we just actually can do it inside of Aspen, and they can log in with their Aspen account, and, uh, everybody could answer a question, go through a quiz, and the teacher could say, "Okay," you know, after like five minutes at the beginning, "Okay, I see where the kids are right now, what we need to, you know, recap from last time, or what we need to, if we can, oh, all the kids know that, we can move forward." So, um, you know, immediate assessment is, is nice.
Well, thank you very much, Neil. You certainly gave us a lot to think about, and it's, um, it's really well put together, well put together. Mrs. Broussard?
I thi- I think I echo that, that I feel better tonight after seeing this presentation than maybe I was feeling at our last meeting. It, it's a little more clear for me.
Right.
Um, and of course, if we're gonna have a Chromebook here at our next meeting, um, of course, all of our meetings are, are open to the public, but if we could strongly encourage parents to come, and maybe that would give them an opportunity to
That's a good idea.
to further understand. I, I think I heard you mention that you were gonna plan some parent information nights leading up to
Mm-hmm.
the timeframe, but, um, hopefully the public is watching, and will say, "This is coming."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you guys wanna add anything? No? Good?
Great job.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good work. Okay, we've done.
Yes. Uh, so you have a copy of the report that I provided to you, and you all received, uh, the link to access all of the evidence. Hopefully it was well enough organized for you to be able to make your way through, and certainly, uh, I think quite a bit there to be able to peruse. Uh, not gonna read through the entire, uh, report here on the mid-cycle, but I did just wanna highlight some key areas. I think it'll be great for the committee to be aware of, and the community as well. Um, our first goal, my first goal, is around strategic focus alignment and coherence. That's my professional practice goal, and I would say we're definitely on target. The biggest key to that was the adoption of the District Strategy for Improvement of Student Outcomes, which was developed, and you all adopted that, uh, on September twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. I would add to that, that as a se- as a segue from Neil's presentation, that there is a, um, whole piece of that strategic plan that's focused on personalized learning, and to really be able to achieve those strategic objectives and priorities, having a one-to-one device initiative will be able to allow us to achieve that strategic objective. So, thank you, obviously, for your support of that. Um, I, I also just, uh, wanna say that I think a lot of work, um, went into the development of this budget document by the team, and that supports the goal that we had of making sure that we were doing a better job of helping you as a committee and the community understand how our resources are allocated, and how they are aligned to our district goals and objectives, so people understand why we're requesting the funds that we're requesting. Um, in terms of the second goal, our student learning goal, closing the gap, we're a little bit off-target. We certainly have made some progress. We do, all of the schools have strong team structures in place now to be able to monitor, to evaluate and monitor the progress of student, students using data, whether it be a data team or an IST team, so that's definitely happening. Um, we're a little bit behind in terms of our evaluation of, uh, tools to assist with our data analysis, but we also just became, I just became aware of the fact that our own system, Aspen, just rolled out, I don't know if they just rolled out, we came aware, aware of a feature in Aspen that we think that we can leverage to help us do this work. It's an at-risk module that we're gonna be looking at over the next few weeks. We're also doing some work to revamp our IST process. That's part of our D cap. That work is a little bit slow, but we're certainly moving forward with that. Um, and, uh, in terms of web resources and supporting parents around, uh, resources for supporting students in their learning, I think we've made some good strides with respect to, particularly in the elementary math area and elementary literacy, and having more resources available for parents to be able to support kids at home as they're engaged in their homework and, and learning. District improvement goal, one, is around developing and expanding our leadership capacity. Uh, I think that, uh, the implementation of the professional learning communities continues to, um, be met very favorably by building staff, with a lot of the PLC tools and strategies are being used to promote and facilitate collaboration, and I think people are refreshed by the fact that our meetings are no lon- longer sort of stand and deliver updates, but it's really an opportunity for teachers to be able to work together, collaborate, and problem-solve important issues in their building. As a result of that, we're actually gonna offer another cohort, some training in PLC strategies at the end of June, like we did last year, and the budget in FY seventeen calls for us to do that one more time. So by the end of the three-year, about a third of our staff will be trained and be able to kind of facilitate this work. So, uh, I think that's really made some, some great, uh, strides for our district in doing that. We continue to do our instructional rounds, and we continue to become more inclusive in our instructional rounds, and this year, a staff member from each building has actually participated with the administrative team. Um, I think that it's been great for them to be able to report out to the rest of the staff exactly what it is that we, we do. It's certainly not a secret. But it's also generated some interest in allowing staff to do peer observations. We're building off that same model, which I think will be a really great thing if we can get that, uh, off the ground. In terms of our safe and supportive schools goal, I wanna just report that our inclusion task force has met on a monthly basis, basis since October. They're doing some great work. They have a mission statement, they have some goals for their work, uh, they've actually reviewed some hard, some research on inclusive practices, and they're in the process of putting together a rubric that they're gonna use to evaluate as we go out into other districts and see these practices at work, and decide what would be feasible and replicable here in Wilmington Public Schools. So we're making some really good headway, and I'm, I'm really, really pleased with the work of that group. We also have, uh, a team of folks who are looking at social-emotional learning curriculum, and, uh, the early childhood centers are actually requesting to train, get training on responsive classroom, which is, uh, a very strong SEL-type program. Um, so we're gonna try to make that happen. They're interested in implementing in the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school year, so they're very excited. I think it's important for us to start, really take hold at the early, uh, childhood and primary grade levels, uh, to really begin with them, so we build up, um, those skills early on, the social competency skills. Uh, just wanted also to report that the CPS pilot at the West, actually, they completed their coaching cycle this past week, and they're now having conversations about how to spread the practice out throughout the building. And this week, we'll start the pilot at the Shawshin School, and I believe, um, right after vacation, it will start at the middle school as well. So we will have some really great data on the success of that CPS pilot. Um, we also have done some pretty neat things, uh, based on some relationships that we developed over the, the last several months with some folks who made themselves available to the district, uh, because they actually saw, actually blog posts that were posted. Um, one was a, a woman from, uh, Reading, lives in Reading, a company called Village Parenting. She's been doing mindfulness training at the Shawshin School. She's been working in three different classrooms, and she's been delivering twenty-minute lessons in those classrooms to the students directly, with the teacher observing on mindfulness. And, uh, Lisa King applied for a grant through WEF to continue to expand that to other classrooms. And it's actually pretty cool to see if you real, if you wanna see something in addition to Chromebooks in action, I would highly recommend that you see that in action. It's, it's actually pretty neat. I've had the opportunity to, to attend a couple of the mindfulness sessions that she's done as well. Um, and also, uh, to let you know that five of our behavioral health staff in Wilmington Public Schools completed the mental health first aid instructor training at the end of this past month. We actually just met today to think about how we're gonna be able to offer this to staff, parents, and community members as we move forward. And again, this was funded through grant funding that we got from Leahy Clinic, so we're really excited to be able to, as are they, to be able to roll this training out to, to parents and staff. And, uh, in terms of enhancing communication and collaboration, uh, we have a district advisory council in place, as you know. Uh, Mrs. Broussard is the school committee's representative to that committee, and we've had two meetings so far, and we have a third one coming up on, uh, February twenty-third. And the council has been really great. They've provided input into the budget process, and we've also been able to have some conversations about parent and family engagement, and different ways to improve and enhance family and community engagement. So that's been very helpful for me. Uh, the superintendent's blog posts have made it out nearly on a weekly basis, um, snow days and vacation weeks excluded. Um, but we've got some really positive feedback. Um, the problem with, uh, the WordPress that we use is it kinda turns you into a stats addict, 'cause you wanna see how many views you get. So I did check in the blog this year, received ten thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-one views in the first half of the school year, so, um, some more than others. Budget topics, not so excited about, social-emotional learning, a little bit more excited about. So that's been kind of fun to, to watch as well. And the final goal in terms of achieving operational effectiveness, we're certainly working hard to do that. We've been starting to work on some of the financial pieces around benchmarking, and you saw that in the budget book, and we'll continue to do that work as well. And we certainly tried to be more inclusive this year with respect to getting budget input from parents and staff members, and had some opportunities for staff to actually give input through a set of four different staff meetings that we, that I attended. Um, and you saw the budget document, which was, you know, significantly expanded to provide a lot more detail on our spending and how we intend to use our money. So, that's the highlights of, of where we stand, so we're in pretty good shape. Those things that are off-target, I'm sure that we will get back on target, or we'll expand them to be two-year goals if they just tend to be not capable of being completed in the one-year period.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments? We have to work next on blog for me.
Okay.
I can't, I can't, the blog to come on my machine.
I think the blog is fantastic, by the way. I've been reading it.
Yeah, that's, I hear it gets a lot of compliments. Um, we, Mary, at this point, wanted to just, um, read something publicly for you that we want to say to you at this point. Dear Superintendent Delai, once again, you have demonstrated to the community the qualities based upon which the school committee hired you to lead our school system. You did an outstanding job last year using your entry plan to explore the state of the school system. You promised your constituents that you would investigate their concerns and act upon them. You have spent the bulk of your second year doing just that. As part of your findings, concern over voting places emerged. You proceeded to contact town officials involved and brought the new idea forward. You met your obligation to bring forth the concerns that you encountered, and you did so in a most professional and factual manner. Your solution considered your best assessment for the benefit of all our students, as well as the community of voters. The majority of selectmen were attentive to your concerns and open to thinking about them and discussing them with you, although they were not in agreement with your conclusions at this time. Unfortunately, one member personalized the exchange in such a way as could be considered disrespectful. You handled the exchange with grace. In addition, at its conclusion, ever the educational leader, you outlined what you'd learned from the experience. Please be assured that your professionalism and caring manner is noted by both the school committee and the community. Thank you for your graciousness and for your ability to remain professional as you work through our school issues. And we've signed this, and we wa- we wanted you to have that in your halfway point.
Oh.
So, it doesn't require a comment if you don't need to.
No, I, well, I would just say, "Thank you." I, I really appreciate the feedback sincerely, so thank you.
And we appreciate how well things are going, so it's, means a lot to us, too. Okay, and, um, our next item would be, let me see, dates. We'll let, public comment. Public comment, okay. Not tonight, thank you. Other reports. Mrs. Broussard?
I'll just put in a, a plug for WEF. We had a meeting recently, and to remind the community to save the date, uh, Thursday, March twenty-fourth, is the annual spelling bee. Um, it's going to be held this year at the Knights of Columbus, as it has been in the year past. It's a fun night. We would love to have as many teams as possible, um, and hopefully my team won't get out on the first word this year.
What was that word, Jill?
I don't remember. I think it's a "s" to say, 'cause I probably couldn't spell it either.
Um, I'd just like to mention that before I came tonight, I saw, um, on the TV that Channel Four is doing a program at the, on the news at eleven o'clock. It's gonna be a four-part program about opiates and, and, um, what's happening in the surrounding communities, so might be something that we'd wanna take a look at if we're still awake at that time. Correspondence, I don't think we have any correspondence. Okay, future meeting dates and agenda items, February twenty-fourth will be our next meeting, and then March ninth. Okay? All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Carol.
Salute.